I'd like to call to order the Concord Township Zoning Commission for Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025. Call to order, pledge allegiance if you would stand and join with me, the pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag, and the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heather, roll call, please.
Mr. Schindler.
Present.
Mr. Eiffelise.
Here.
Mr. Peterson.
Here.
Mr. Terriaco.
Here.
And Mr. Reppert.
Here. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes. We have none, so we will jump over that. Correspondence. Frank, do you have any correspondence?
None, Mr. Chairman.
Ron.
No, I do not.
Okay. Rich.
Nothing, thank you.
Rich.
I had nothing either, Mr. Chairman.
And I had nothing either, so correspondence is light too. Zoning inspector report, Heather, please.
Okay. Well, good evening. So in front of your seats tonight, you'll see replacement pages that are being provided to you. These need to go into your zoning resolutions. These updates are effective on September 5th, 2025. This is based on the trustees who voted to adopt your recommendation for all the nine zoning text amendments that just went through the public hearing process. So those pages are there for you. The township has started their Concorde hits a plan update. Staff held their kickoff meeting with the planning consultants, MS consultants, last month, and they held their first steering committee meeting last week as well. We do have a community open house planned for September 16th from 5:30 to 7:30 is going to take place at fire station number one. I'll probably, I just got late today from our consultants, we have a website that was put together and a survey that was done. We're going to make that go live probably tomorrow, so I'll probably send that out to everybody. That's an easy way to participate, and then we'll have other opportunities to participate in the process as well as we move through this.
It's September what?
September 16th. It's a Tuesday.
That's it.
Sixteenth, one six.
Two weeks, okay, okay.
And just a quick update on the August zoning permit activity report. Last month, we processed 32 zoning permit applications. The vast majority of the permits were for residential projects, nine new accessory buildings, nine new dwelling units, six fences, three accessory structures, two additions for residential homes, two new decks, and two new businesses. The new businesses include the Great Lakes Automotive, which is a business that's going to provide automotive repairs located on Ravenna Road right next door to Concord Collision. It was the former electrical contractor's building there. And then another new business called Azika, and they provide music editing services, and they'll be located on Auburn Road in the Normandy complex there, just north of the roundabout. Quick update on the BZA, they had a couple variance applications that were approved in August. One of them was for residential property who wanted to have a six-foot tall fence that projected into the front yard along the side property line instead of the maximum four-foot tall that was approved. And then there was a home in a residential district as well who was granted a variance to allow them to construct a covered front porch. Their house was already at the minimum 50-foot building setback line, they wanted to add an eight-foot covered porch off the front, and that variance was approved. So they've had a couple of those front porch variance requests. They actually commented that you guys should be aware of that. So I guess it's good that I'm giving you updates. So we start to see some trends. But that's all I have for now, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Public participation, boy, is it light today. Anybody on the phone?
No, sir.
I don't think so. Okay, I don't think we have any public participation. New business. I have heard, you know, the package you have in front of you. Heather has a PowerPoint presentation for us. We do not want to go through line by line by line by line, but as something comes up, we'll discuss it if we can. She may not get through the whole thing tonight, so it might go into next month and the month after, I don't know, we'll see. But Heather does have a presentation, so the floor is yours.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So I did put together some slides here. As we discussed, we want to take a look at our existing sign regulations with section XXX30. Dim the lights a little bit, so. So this section of the sign code was written by a consultant that the township hired just over a decade ago, and they put together a steering committee of township officials as well that helped them come up with the regulations that we currently have. Those regulations became effective March 21st of 2014. About a year later, there was a US Supreme Court case Reed versus Town of Gilbert that came out that has really got a lot of municipalities and townships looking at their sign regulations. That is part of the reason that we decided to update some of ours. In this case, in Reed, the Supreme Court invalidated the sign code enacted by the town of Gilbert, Arizona, because it was a content-based regulation of speech. The sign code singled out different types of signs for special treatment, specifying requirements for their size and locations and times when they could be displayed. The church challenged the sign code as a violation of their freedom of speech under the First Amendment. So this little graphic I found in another presentation kind of shows you like there were different size requirements based on who the speaker was and different timeframes as far as how long signs could be erected depending on what the event was or what the message was on the sign. So what did the court say? Basically, that the town's sign code defined categories based on their messages and that each category had different restrictions and that it depended entirely on the sign's communicative content, so it was content-based. And the court continued to say that it was presumably unconstitutional, that basically unless the restrictions furthered a compelling governmental interest, then they would be subject to strict scrutiny. So why do temporary directional signs have a greater threat to a compelling government interest than like aesthetics or traffic than any other kind of sign category? The court said that you can still continue to regulate the signs based on time, place, and manner, but not to base it, but the regulations can't be, if the regulations are based on the content, that it would probably not pass strict scrutiny or any kind of test that they would look at.
So this was the US Supreme Court, not the Arizona one?
Correct.
Yeah, the state Supreme Court, it was the US.
US. And I'm sure Brady knows way more about that, so I'm just glossing over.
Kate, can we ask, since you, Brady was kind enough to forward me this when I was asking questions a couple months ago. So what was Gilbert, what was Gilbert found unconstitutional? What did they, what was in the code? Did they regulate, tried to regulate what the sign said?
No, so they had different regulations for temporary signs, political signs, and what was the third one?
Yeah.
HOA?
HOA.
They're called like ideological signs. They actually had these different categories which were exempt from getting a permit. They had to comply with certain things. His was a sign to have church services. He did not have an actual building for his church, so he had different places where they would have these church services, so he put them up all over different places. And it, there was, I don't think the event, if I'm not mistaken, he didn't take it down within an hour after the event, which was a requirement of their sign code.
Okay.
And also did not have the actual date of the event on the actual sign. So, but the sign code ordinance, you know, enforcer of the town of Gilbert or the village of Gilbert, like cited them a couple of times and said, listen, we are going to enforce our code. The pastor said, this is Mr. Reed, he said, you are violating my First Amendment right to free speech because you are saying that my sign, you know, different than all these other signs, you know, has to be down within a certain amount of time of the event, we don't do that with other temporary or these kind of signs, so.
Oh, it was biased to?
Well, I don't know if it was biased, but in his, in his mind, and the US Supreme Court agreed, it was content-based, so it was based on the content of the sign instead of some of these other signs that were allowed to be up much longer or allowed to be bigger signs versus his smaller sign, that sort of thing. So that's where, in his mind, it was, you know, this is a violation of my First Amendment right because now you're regulating the content and telling me that the content on the sign is going to regulate and tell us how big the sign can be and how long it can be up for, which is a big no-no according to the United States Supreme Court.
I see, okay, okay. Wow. Okay, thank you. Sorry, Heather.
So after that, some of the, what folks are saying is that you really, when looking at updating your sign regulations, you really need to consider, rather than considering signs as a land use, consider it as protected free speech. So just kind of a new way of looking at it. And some of the best practices after Reed, these are what all the planning experts and sign code people are kind of saying, like, make sure your sign regulations include a substitution clause, make sure it includes a severability clause, make sure your purpose statements are very detailed and at the beginning of your sign regulations, and then also make sure you're minimizing the different categories of your signs. So that, those are some of the things that I looked at when we were proposing changes for ours. So the first one, the substitution clause, this is what I was proposing to add, a new section 30.18, basically, it just says any permitted commercial message can be substituted with a non-commercial message, and this prevents any kind of inadvertent preferential treatment of commercial speech over non-commercial speech. And then a severability clause, basically, if this section of the sign, if any section of the sign regulations is found to be unlawful, that portion can be removed without invalidating the entire resolution. So that is the new, what I'm proposing to add to the new sections 30.17. Not going to read it, it's right there on the slide. We also have a packet in front of you. And then we already had a bunch of purpose statements in here, but I was proposing to modify a couple of them and then add a new one. So under the purpose statements, looking at updating 30.01C, and then adding, updating D as well, talking about allowing businesses to have reasonable and appropriate opportunities to identify their properties and advertise their goods and services while also trying to minimize clutter and distractions that maybe contribute factors with traffic congestion, accidents. And then the last one, ensuring that the provisions of the section don't infringe on the rights of free speech. Just going to paraphrase that one, but, so those are three new additions to the purpose statements. And then trying to minimize categories. As far as like nontemporary signs, I felt like our zoning resolution did a pretty good job not categorizing, but when we got into the temporary signs, we did come across a lot of these. So I, you know, we had project contractor signs, we had project construction signs, special event signs, a lot of these, real estate signs, we, and the goal was to try to, if you, the goal is, like, you should not have to read the sign to know how to regulate the sign. So all of the provisions really should be somewhat the same. So that's what I tried to look at. And what I was proposing to do is just update our section 30.09. And this is the temporary sign regulations. So, so the, a new statement that would be added here basically says that the signs in this section are exempt from the permanent signs, and they're not counted towards the total square footage, just to be clear there, but if signs do not meet the standards of the temporary sign section, then they would be subject to permanent sign regulations. So what I was proposing to do is split this up into different categories, talking about residential districts, and then non-residential districts, and then get into some more and more specific types of temporary signs. So for residential districts, now this would all be new because we don't have, we have different sign allowances for residential signs currently, and we're trying to clean that up. So the idea was that each residential unit would be allowed one or more temporary signs, and those temporary signs could be either in the window of the house or in the yard as a small yard sign, or it could be on the building, like a wall sign. One or more, no, of, no sign should be greater than eight square feet, no taller than four feet, but regardless of how many signs you have out there, the total square footage of the sign face area cannot exceed 12 square feet. As far as location, it needs to be minimum of 10 feet back from property wise. Now, the location requirement is something we already have for temporary signs in residential districts. The square footage is something new because right now we do not have any square footages for signs, for temporary signs. So these are kind of, these are new standards. And the other thing that's new would be putting a time limit on how long a temporary sign can be up there. And looking at some other communities, they had 45 days, so that's where I was starting with, so the temporary sign could be up for 45 days. And then after that 45 days, they can either take it down or they could replace it with another one, or, or it could turn, then if it exceeds that 45 days, I guess it would be subject to the permanent sign regulations. And then you would have to look at what are the permanent sign regulations allowances for the residential districts. I did kind of look at what are some standard sizes for temporary signs?
Can we go back to that, can I make, please?
Yeah.
So just find this one.
Yeah.
Which prompted a question a few months ago about this too, Brady. So examples of a temporary sign in a residential district, other than an election, an issue or candidate, what are examples of temporary signs in front of a home?
So I've seen people have, like, they just had, like, construction done at their house, so they'll put the construction companies, like SOA Construction, just did my renovation. Or they may have, I'm having a yard sale, here's my sign promoting my yard sale, or...
Heather, what about, I have a little sign out there now that I think about it, Ohio State Buckeyes, I have a little flag in front of my house.
That would be maybe a temporary sign, yeah.
But you leave it up for the whole season.
Right.
Okay.
Now, even, yeah, and so just so you know, it would be complaint-driven regarding timeframes. I mean, the signs would have to, you know, with any violation, you know, if I got a call, somebody said that the sign's been out there for two years and the zoning resolution says no more than 45 days, I would have to have my own proof that it's more than 45 days, so I'd probably have to take a photo and then keep checking, get more evidence, and then if it's past the 45 days, like, it should be pretty obvious if it's really been up there two years, right? Then I could probably send a letter to the property owner if they were already exceeding the square footage that would be allowed for then even a permanent sign, because you are allowed to have a certain amount of permanent signage, and under the current resolution, it can be one up to three square feet and two additional ones at one and a half square feet. So if they decide to keep that one sign in the front yard all year long, and it's three square feet, they're allowed to have that.
What about if they take it down for a day and then put it back up?
Yeah.
Play that silly game.
You could, yeah.
Another question.
Yeah.
So in a window, what if an HOA has rules against that?
Yeah.
What governs?
You have to comply with both. Yeah. Because I know, like, the hunt club, like, they didn't allow any yard signs up until, I think, the last couple of years, they started being a little bit more lenient with their residents over there, but we've always allowed, you know, signage and, we've always told folks you have to be able to comply with both. So if the HOA is more strict, then you have to follow that.
And then most of the signs are really just, really just behind the curb. I think, I think we're seeing 10-foot setback.
Yeah. That's what we currently have, I'm totally open to changing that, because I know no one complies with that, I can tell you that right now. They basically have it in the right of way almost.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I don't know, five feet is more realistic to try to shoot for, I mean, not going to be able to, definitely open to.
Right, usually you see it behind, I mean, behind the curb. I mean, you want, whether you're supporting an issue or a candidate.
Want people to see it.
See it as a dry app, right?
Yeah, true. Heather, what brings you to the 12 square feet for the combined area? How do you calculate? How do you come up with that?
I, right, I just kind of made it up, right? Well, we had nothing to start with, right? So that's why I was looking at what are the sizes of typical yard signs, those small little political signs tend to be like one and a half by two, so about three square feet, so they could have up to four of those all year long, or up to 45 days each time they're up. I mean, maybe that's too much, just trying to be generous enough to allow somebody who might want to do something larger.
Yeah.
But that one, the largest it could be is eight square feet, so you could do an eight and then a four and have your two or whatever.
Just curious how you come up with that.
It might be way too much. I mean, like, I was kind of driving around a little bit, like, just looking at homes, and I'm like, hardly anyone has signs up just on a regular day basis, you know, but...
But I think this is an important, for our community, bedroom community, this is an important one, this temporary signs. If I hear people complain or ask questions, it's always about signs.
Yeah.
It's always about signs in yards, windows, mailboxes, well, mailposts I should say, off the post. Well, maybe that's not a 10%, that's a banner.
That's a banner, yeah.
Like the flags that they put on the mailboxes?
Like Rich's Ohio State flag, if he's got it. None.
It's actually in front of the house.
Oh, it's in front of it.
Little wire thing, then it hangs down and blows in the wind and...
Yeah. But yeah, neighbors with, yeah, Ohio State's flag is, so not their old, as well.
I know there's some mailboxes that are like that, and technically, those are all in the right of way, but we've never really addressed that or enforced.
Yeah, I don't think anybody finds it objectionable, was.
Right.
I don't think so. I think it's mainly other types of signs that stay around forever.
Well, there's a guy when you come up the street down here that's got the brown, his mailbox is painted, the bronze colors, you know? His mailbox and the post and everything is, is the brown. Well, the ones you complain about are the ones that aren't taken down.
They're not taken down, right. But this will have the timeframe on it, but it's complaint-driven?
It would likely be complaint-driven, yeah.
Okay.
But, but like I stated, the 12 square feet, the 10-foot setback, these are all things that we can discuss further if you guys want to look at different numbers, we can definitely do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Let me get back to the slides real quick, okay. Oh, but I had kind of looked at what are some of the yard, typical sizes of some of these signs that, that people do, and just in case you guys were wondering what is the standard sizes on some of those, so I just had a quick slide in there.
What's the top one? I can't read it.
Oh, the top one is a three-by-eight banner.
How many square feet?
That's a 24-square-foot banner. Like, I, I know we have some of the, some churches that tend to do larger banners when they're promoting events. We don't see a lot of banner usage, usually it's smaller signs. But continuing on with the temporary signs, then also in section 30.09 for the non-residential, I think that, let me check my record, sorry. Yeah, for temporary signs in non-residential districts. So when you have a lot that is developed, they can have one or more temporary signs, combined square footage not to exceed 16 square feet, maximum height six feet, and setback 10, minimum setback of 10 feet. Again, these could be, or these are the freestanding signs and wall signs, so it could either be on the building or in the yard. Now, these are new numbers as well because we did not have any size restrictions. We currently regulate special events in the commercial districts, and we have very specific language about allowing businesses to promote a special event. Up to, they can advertise for their special event no more than 45 days in a calendar year, but there's no size of the sign that it's, that is in there, no height restrictions. I think it has a 10-foot setback though, and that's it. So with this, we are trying to come up with some kind of standard. Then we have the temporary window signs, which we already kind of regulate, temporary window signs and permanent signs are kind of grouped together. Essentially, you can't cover more than 50% of the window area in most of the zoning districts, and then like in the Town Hall Commons District, it's limited to 25, or 10% of the sign, of the window area. I kept all of that the same, I didn't make any changes to any of those restrictions. Another kind of new section, again, under temporary signs in the non-residential districts are these banner-type signs. So one thing that I read that a lot of people were recommending is when, you should allow banner signs to be used when you have new businesses coming in that are taking over vacant spaces where they might already have a sign, but they don't, they can't get their new sign fabricated, so this new section would allow them to put that same-size sign to basically essentially cover the old sign for no more than 90 days or, or whenever the new sign, the permanent sign is installed. And then also, something new though, would be allowing them to use, non-residential landowners to use the banner sign for another purpose, not for an interim, we're just covering this temporarily, but that would essentially allow them to promote whatever they want. One banner up to 32 square feet, maximum height four, up to four times a year with each event no more than 30 days at a time. Now, that's a pretty significant change from what we have now, so maybe that, that might be too much, I don't know, we can talk about that, but, because right now we have like one, no more than 45 days, you can spread that out over whatever number of events you want with no size restrictions. Now with this, this would give basically non, the non-residential district more time throughout the year to potentially advertise. We also have regulations about sandwich board signs, this is another type of temporary sign. We currently already have some regulations in there, one would be permitted per business or tenant, it should be located... It should be located within five feet of the entrance to the business and then providing some maximum height and with size guidelines. Um, and then a new statement stating that it can be displayed only, only basically when the building, when the business is opened.
Now, we have, we have some of these regulations already on, on the books. Some of them are new.
Yep.
How is the store owner gonna know the difference? When he puts his banner out that's bigger than what we allow?
So right now in non-residential districts, they are supposed to come and get a temporary sign permit before they put the sign up.
Okay.
Um, and we would propose to still have that same process where they should come in and get the temporary sign permit. But even leading up to that, you know, we can let the community know if, if we adopt new standards, what those standards are. We can, I can talk to different business owners and let them know. More than often not, they're, they're calling and asking, well, what are the sizes? I even get calls from real estate agents. What size sign are we allowed to put over there?
Okay.
But we can communicate that with the businesses.
The, the, the way I'm thinking is if you go down dispatch the one right next to it, whatever it is. And they have a, a sandwich board already made up that they put out and it's bigger than this. So they put it out again and it's in violation.
Well, did I actually have one?
Oh, I don't know.
Oh, okay. I know Gremex kinda uses one, but they don't use it correctly. They put it in the right of way. But I'm trying to think who actually uses one. If it truly is like an A-frame, T-frame sandwich board sign, it should fall within those size sign regulations. I mean, I can do more research on that and make sure, but and if it's a sign that was existed prior to the resolution being updated, then it would be non-conforming. However, I don't know with a sandwich board that it would be. I don't, I'm not sure. I'd have to look at that.
Whatever.
I don't think nobody's gonna complain.
I don't think so. They're used to seeing that sandwich board out there.
Yeah. And it should be a sta- a pretty standard size, so.
Well, I don't think there's too many that are obnoxious, so.
It's better to have the, the size restrictions in there rather than not having them, cause someone could get really carried away with that and fabricate like a really large A-frame type sign and, and you know, still try to use it in accordance with the regulations if you don't have a, a size requirement in there. Um, and then even vacant parcels need to be able to have signage. So, so temporary signs on a vacant parcel, what I'm proposing is you can have one per parcel, maximum forty square feet, maximum height six feet. Uh, if you're on a corner lot, um, and of at least three hundred foot of frontage, you could have a second additional sign being no larger than thirty-two square feet. And then, okay, signage, so this, signage during construction. So say you have a construction site, um, and they need to put signage up, this would allow them to have one sign no larger than thirty-two square feet at each entrance to the, to the site. Uh, maximum height six feet and then it should be removed upon the project being completed or the occupancy of the, um, the building.
I've seen, speaking of construction signs, the, the development is half a mile away and they put it on the telephone pole. Post that are coming into, one of the streets coming down to the development right up here where I can see in a moment. The development that's being built there, you know?
Oh, the Ivy Ridge.
Thank you.
Yeah, that, that's.
How do you stop that from happening?
Well, I can't stop everything from happening, but.
No, I just said, I just noticed that they put the sign way up the street, for example, next to a telephone pole. Matter of fact, they had it on the telephone pole for a while.
Yeah.
And nailed onto the telephone pole.
Yeah. We find that all the time. People put signs in the right of way of, of the road and on poles and.
But this one here is, is a development, a developer who's building a complex.
Yeah.
And you've got that sign sitting down there, it could take months and months and months to complete.
I'm sorry, is this advertising the development or is it?
Like Pulte Homes, like Ryan Homes.
It's not, not them, it's actually the developer himself.
Then not a sign during construction, it says.
Oh.
It's just.
It's advertising.
It's a Pulte sign, right?
It's advertising.
No, it's the one that's on, no.
Brutal Road.
No.
At Cryolyn Hunting Lake?
No. Damn it, same one. Gotta take it in now. Well, the, the ones, the ones that I've seen advertise a development, whether it be Pulte or whoever it may be, or Ryan or whoever. And it says this way or what, and it's on a pole or.
Those aren't permitted.
No, they're not permanent, but they're there more than forty-five days.
Well, so what happens with those, those Ryan Homes, like they hire sign companies to come out and they put those signs up like essentially on the weekends. Um, because they know that most communities do not permit them. And if they're left there on Monday and they're in the right of way, you know, we can, we can take them and we have.
Usually Saturday, Sunday mornings, probably at eighty-four, it's loaded with them.
Yeah. Sometimes they forget to come pick them up. But those are in the right of way and we already prohibit like signs like that in the right of way and off premises signs. So those are problems that we already deal with as best we can.
Yeah.
This is more of, um, hey, we're like the outside design center up here. They're building a brand new building. They wanna have a, a project sign out there. So here's some criteria. You know, here's the size your sign can be. Or maybe the trades wanna have, I, I don't know, the signage for their, the trades that are coming on the site to do something, you know? Maybe they have additional signage. All right. Signs on vacant parcels, okay. Signs during construction. Oh, here's the, the last one, this one. Um, signs during elections. So this is, um, something different that we're proposing here. I saw, um, actually the city of Willoughby, this kinda came from what the city of Willoughby was doing. But signs during elections. So from up to thirty days prior to the day absentee ballots are available or the day that early voting is permitted for a general primary or special election and up to three days following, the number of signs on a residential lot is not restricted. Provided that no such sign shall be larger than eight square feet and a height of four feet. And and that essentially would allow for someone to promote, to have more signage for whatever they want during that, that timeline. It would still be subject to like, you know, the then act, so I guess Rich, from like an enforcement standpoint, after the three days, if they kept it all up, then the zoning inspector would have to probably look at the signs and go, okay, they have, say they have four signs up and they're each three square feet. It's twelve square feet. So if they didn't have any other temporary signs, they could probably leave them up. I'd have to figure out the forty-five days if we got a complaint, you know? Take photo or something and kinda make, see if they took any down, replace them, you know, I mean, it would be, you know, a little challenging. But at least we would have some parameters. And then, again, it could roll into then, it could be considered their permanent signage if they didn't have any other signs. And if it exceeded the forty-five days. As long as it still met that, that maximum square footage allowance. So I know that's a, those are a lot of changes with the temporary signs. I don't know if you guys wanna pause there and talk about any of that more or if you want me to just keep going.
It's in thirty oh, alright, thirty oh nine.
So three days, four days after, after an election, all those signs should be taken down?
Not necessarily. The, the temper, the, um, the, the lift on not enforcing the, the maximum square footage would then come off and now then they would be subject to the temporary sign regulations that are applicable all year round.
Oh, okay.
If they decide not to take them down, right? So if they don't take them down, then I would have to look at it as, okay, these are their temporary signs. And then, okay, how much square footage?
So they don't take them down, so then they'll fall into another category.
Yeah.
I've seen political signs that are out there that have been there for four years.
Yeah.
Big ones.
Right, and I think with some of those, like you could easily prove that they've been longer than the forty-five days and if they are not, and if they are over the size for allowance for the signage, then at least then we could have some kind of possible enforcement maybe, but right now we have no size restrictions on any of that.
Would this, does it need, it would say signs during elections, so do we need to define that it includes levies or, or issues on the ballot, or it's just simply elections? That, is it broad enough that covers any election of, for any, any, anything other than anything all inclusive, meaning political candidates, issues, levies, ballots, et cetera? Supportive. Issue one, whatever.
Yeah, I mean, I think it does. I mean, we talked about for any general primary or special election. I don't know, Variety, if you have anything to add to that?
No, I mean, I, I agree. When I read that, I wonder if we should have some sort of definition, but then I think, oh.
Definition, well, and then is it, we say general, primary or special, I mean, local, state, federal, I mean,
Right.
That's how I, why I think of it, but if we say general, primary or special.
Right.
It could be a local thing, right?
Right, for sure.
School level. I don't know, just wondering, just saying elections covers it. That, that was really my only question on that one.
Well, would this, would that, would special elections kinda cover some of those or? Like so if it's, like a.
That would be a stretch, I think. Special elections would be a stretch.
Yeah, I don't know.
For a levy. You'd have to have like presidential and then like you say, a school levy. So we'd have, I think maybe we have to line up some categories that would make sense to them.
Guess I defer to Variety with that, that one.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Where, where, we got this, we kinda took this a little bit.
Willoughby, yeah.
Do you, do you know that they define election?
I don't, not in the, yeah. We can look and do that.
I think the more categories we start defining, I think that's where I think we get in that area of.
Yeah, probably.
Right, possibly content based.
Yeah.
I'll try to use one word that encompasses everything, special.
What's special?
What's special to you or special to me is, you know?
Yeah.
But it's out there though.
Yeah, right.
You know, it's something that everyone knows they have to go and put their check mark on, on a ballot.
I, I think I generated that question because the proposed changes eliminate the definition of a political sign.
Right.
So if we eliminate the definition, then what is it? What is, what is an election?
And keep in mind, I mean, just because someone is saying vote for X or vote for this levy, there, there's other political signs that could be out there, right? I'm sure you've seen some,
Sure.
You know, um, you know, second amendment rights or something like that. Those are political signs, right? They're not necessarily election signs. Yeah, we'll have to maybe consider that. But a special election is usually, I mean, that is one that usually is paid for separately. It's not on, you know, primaries and on the general. It's definitely a, an election. It can be levy issues, bond issues, that's what I think, so I could.
Well, I'm sorry. Could you define them from the election board with the general election or what special elections are? I mean, I, I would not wanna define it so much. But if you're looking for a definition with the, the election board, wouldn't they have the definition what a general election is or what's special?
Sure, I would think so.
They would probably have a list of all the, oh, it's the, what categories?
Cause we have to know where to put
Right.
what we want for it, huh?
So why, why did we eliminate the definition of political sign?
We were trying to, I think, eliminate any additional category, cause we actually did regulate political signs, not just define them.
Aren't we still regulating them?
I don't, I don't know. Um, that's a good question. I'm not sure if this includes politi- all political signs. To me, this might include signs regarding an upcoming election. Different than a political sign. So in other words, let's say someone has a sign that just says Trump. Is that a, an election sign?
Or is it just?
Or is it a political sign?
I get it.
I don't know.
Yeah.
I would probably argue it's a political sign.
I think the, the main point, what I was looking at when I, when I read this is that the main takeaway of this is during this cycle, whatever, this thirty days prior to, the number of signs permitted on a residential lot is not restricted. Doesn't matter what the signs are. It's basically so it, it could be completely unrelated to an election.
Right, right.
It could. It's, it's, I guess it's just an effort to try to not restrict freedom of speech. Giving residential lot owners additional square footage to, to get their message out, speak freely about what their issues are and around these times of the years, people tend to need to be able to do that. Right? So without saying what the sign is gonna say or anything, we need to somehow be more flexible. Maybe during certain times of the year and maybe not all throughout the year. Does that make sense?
Sure, sure. Well, when does the freedom of speech go to be offensive? How, how do we, do we?
Great question. I mean, there, I don't know if you've seen some, um, Portage County, they have expletives and then something, I mean, and they're up.
Yes.
Been up for a while.
Yes.
Um, so I mean, I keep believe they don't regulate that. And somehow say, listen, that's offensive, but I mean, maybe it's complaint driven, right? Maybe someone has a complaint, I don't know.
So we're not going to address that? May- maybe it's a, it's a matter of opinion or a matter of I don't know, when, when did something that is offensive, when isn't?
Anything I think has to do with hate. I mean, we know what hate speech is.
Hate, yeah, that would be offensive.
That would definitely be offensive. When you're gonna project harm to somebody, for example.
Racism, that's sort of like.
I mean, we had a candidate, we had a candidate running on that.
Can we, it, it. It's tough?
I, I, no, what I'm saying is it's, um, it's hard for an example. I feel like, I mean, um, you know, depending on which side, I guess, I, I don't know, like is it an incite to violence kinda thing? Is it a threat? Is it, um, you know, I would, I would think yes. You can't be able to maybe, you know, you have to really look at the case law and that, but I think it would not be, I think the justice would run and say or whatever, I know it when I see it, right? It's a habit, but I don't know if that actually apply, I mean, it's hard to really apply that, right? I mean, some people are saying that, you know, certain political signs are offensive, they're saying they are. I mean, some people are saying that, you know, certain political signs are offensive, others are saying they are not. Some say that certain flags that you fly are offensive, others are saying no. It is, it gets, gets down to that, right? So I know that the House Supreme Court, you know, and the US Supreme Court, they've had issues really dealing with that stuff.
Well, I think anytime you have to bring some harm to an individual, a human being, I mean, you can, that's obvious. That it's hate.
I know this goes beyond the temporary sign that we're talking about, but it's just.
No, it is. These are, these are exactly the questions, and that's why it's like, how choice will arise in the future. And would, again, the complaint driven part of it makes you feel like, okay, and it's a little bit better because it's not just someone's opinion or someone else. We have to actually investigate it and we have to go through this, this process, but I mean, to your point, um, you know, to a human being, I mean, isn't that also the question, right? What is a human being, right? So you might have someone who's pro-choice versus pro-life. And I'm just saying, you know, I don't know that it's necessarily a, I don't think it's black and white. I think it's definitely gray.
Bridie, I, I saw some communities that were regulating just basically, like, adult content, like, on the signs, that they were not permitting, like, like sexually explicit content on signage.
Possibly.
I, I don't know. I mean, that's not, so I don't know. That's something else that I don't think we have issues with that here necessarily, but.
Right. That would be another issue.
I wasn't proposing anything to, to address that, but I did see that in some other communities.
I wasn't suggesting that as a board, as a body, as a governmental body, for a number of trustees, that we take a stance on that. That we put something in here to say, you know what, these types of things are considered offensive in our community.
And it applied to any sign, not just a sign during an election.
Any sign.
Right, exactly.
I can support that.
I won't, I'm not a volunteer to write it.
No.
I don't want to say it.
Be an instructor.
Say it the right way without.
Do we want to continue?
Yes, so another question.
Other proposed changes, you know, just.
The temporary sign question again. Is there a reason we would exclude a temporary sign on a building? Why is a temporary sign okay on a building? A bill, on a home, on a house, in a window? It's just, I'm just asking.
You're asking why is it okay?
Why is that okay?
Well, we have people.
For our, for Concreton Township.
There's a perfect example. You order the dog.
Yeah.
And that's, that's there twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, all the time.
Yeah, or no solicitors.
Or no solicits. Or there's a sign I've seen on all my past in Paine'sville, it's got a gun. Shows the barrel of a gun on the front door of the house.
Pointing at you, yeah.
Pointing at you. Don't be afraid of the dog.
Okay.
It's be afraid of my Smith and Wesson. It says, don't be afraid of the dog, you know? That, that's been out in this house like this for years.
It's a sign, right?
Yeah, that's a sign.
It's a sign.
And it's not greater than ten percent of the window or whatever.
Uh-huh.
Or, oh, it's, it's a small one.
I, I get your question, though, because there's, there's a, there's a house right now that has a temporary sign on it, and it's on the side of their house. It's on Johnny Cake, and I thought it was going to come down, like, and I haven't looked, you know, I noticed it one day, and I'm like, wow, that's an odd place for a sign. Was promoting an event, and the event has already come and gone, the sign is still there. But I get your question, why are we allowing them walls? Like, yeah, most people put them in the yard.
Yeah.
A lot of people put them in the, there are some that have to put them in the window, because, again, in the hunt, like, over in Quail Hollow, Hunt Club, they were not allowed to do any yard signs. They had to even put their real estate signs in the window. Their HOA was making them put them in the window. So, um, just giving people options. I think most folks won't put a temporary sign on their wall, but maybe they will. I, I don't, maybe they want to put something on the garage for whatever. I don't really know, yeah.
I guess it might apply more to commercial or non-residential where the sign, um, I don't know, walk this way, front door, this way. Maybe those are signs too, I don't know. I, I guess, I guess I'm asking a question, but answering then, yeah, okay, signs on buildings. Scratch that. Because maybe it was the window thing that was kind of like bothered my, because I've seen it. Judges' Court, the new street.
Oh.
Yeah, which was in the window for a long time.
Oh.
Worked in the street.
Yeah, yeah, work, yeah. Okay, sorry.
That's okay. Maybe else right now, or you're thinking, Hiram, what's going on?
Well, I'm just thinking about a, a temper, not, not even a, a permanent sign in a window. I'm advertising my kids in the band, and there's a big band note with the name underneath it, and you stick that in the window. And that stays for months at a time.
Yeah.
Or the ones that say, my daughter, my son's an honor student at Riverside High School. I've seen a whole bunch of those.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I've seen a lot of them.
So out of curiosity, if some of you were to complain about that, how would you enforce that?
Complain specifically, I'm sorry, about a window?
Signs in the window, yeah. How would you, how would you handle that?
About the number of them, or?
Sure, any.
Or the length of time.
Length of time, yeah. How, how would you address, how would you?
Yeah. Oh. No, okay, well, that's what I do with any zoning violation, is I go to the property to see what, what I actually see.
Take a picture.
Do they have signs up in the window, okay? Take a photo of it, come, you know, look at the resolution. What are the requirements for these signs or whatever it is? And I can't just take a word that, from the complainant, that it's been here for six months, right? Like, I have to, because I don't, if something were to escalate.
Unless they supply you with a picture, with a date.
I'm sorry, what?
Unless they supply you with a dated picture.
Well, and even with that, that's taking somebody else's words. So like, if something were to ever escalate, where we had to go to court or something like that, you would have to bring that person in to testify, and it's easier just to try to collect your own information.
Okay.
So I would take a photograph if it exceeded, you know, and then I would have to come back. And if it was a time issue, you know, if it could be no more than thirty days, I would just have to come back in thirty days, photograph it, and make a determination. Is this still the same sign? Is it still in the same location? Is there now a zoning violation? And if there is a zoning violation, you know, then, and then I should, I typically start off with like a warning letter. Like, hey, did you know we have this rule? You're, you're not in compliance with it because of this, and this is how you can get into compliance. If you think I'm incorrect, you can appeal my decision to the BZA, or if you, you agree, but you, you have some kind of practical difficulty and you want to keep it here for a certain, you know, you can ask for, you can go to the BZA and ask for a variance.
I have a neighbor down at the end of my street that has his son's school logo painted in the driveway.
Wow, interesting.
Yeah, it's painted in the driveway, just as you pull into the driveway.
Well, that's non-conforming, so we won't have to deal with that.
It's painted on his concrete. I mean, I don't find objectionable, I just say, there it is.
That's interesting.
Yeah, promoting his son's football.
Yeah.
That's cool.
You can't come up with everything.
Oh, I know.
People do.
There's just something there.
Like, but, like the music note. I have two in my windows right now at home. So I didn't know exactly what you're talking about. But if they stayed up all year long, maybe those are my two permanent signs, because I don't have any other signs. Those are my only signs, my two window signs from each kid and, you know. So they, they technically could fall under my permanent sign allowance, so they could be allowed to be there on your lawn.
I think the biggest that I know what to worry about is a safety issue. If it's in the right of way, for example, an obstructive, obstructing measure. That, that's pretty, a critical consideration.
Yeah.
In itself, you know? Other than that size, one might be objectionable for me, but it's not objectionable for you. You know, if it stays out there, fine. It's hard to try to come up with something, right?
Does the township ever take political signs that are in the road right of way?
No, we don't.
Ever, never?
Never. The only thing I've ever done, um, is if it was a site obstruction, is try to get the property owner to, like, move it back.
But never have taken them?
I've never taken them out of the right of way, though. I've taken other signs out of the right of way, but not, yeah.
I think the township as well, within its rights, to take them out of the right of way, but I get it, because there's even a comment in the Reed case where Thomas says something to the extent of municipality even took, it was defined, talking about another case, but where the municipality took the political sign out of the road right of way and kept it, or something like that, made it like, and almost suggested that was, you know, prohibited. I disagree, I mean, I disagree. I've seen municipalities take political signs out of the road right of way all the time.
Yeah.
Especially when, you know, it's like a primary that's in March, where we have, you know, not such great weather, and they're still snow plowing, and I mean, they take them out anyway.
Oh, right.
With their snow blow.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
So, but I get it, just curious.
All right, let's continue on, page nine, other proposed changes.
Oh, okay, okay.
The chair goes back to him.
So other, other changes, you'll notice if you've reviewed the packet in advance, that we are updating thirty oh two, thirty point zero two definitions. Trying to, one, get rid of some of these categories, right? But then also updating some of the definitions. One, one to point out would be a revised definition for a flag and a new definition for flag sign. And then also making a distinction under our freestanding signs. The, a difference between a ground sign and a pole sign. Which, under our current regulations, under the permanent signs in, in non-resident, residential districts, we essentially only really permit ground signs, which is something I want to talk to you guys about a little bit in the next couple of slides here, to get your feedback on. But then, um, some other general computations, some updates to that, thirty point oh three, some minor, um, changes there. Some of that was rearranging some of the existing, um, regulations as well. But under thirty oh four, these are the residential signs and signs in residential districts. These are the permanent signs that you'll see. This looks like a lot of red changes, because it, it is, but essentially I've kind of taken the, gotten rid of the table and broke it down by, these are the rules for parcels with one family and two family residential properties. These are the rules for the multi-family residential properties, and then these are the rules for residential subdivisions, development signs as you come in, and then for non-residential uses in the residential districts. Just somewhat reorganizing that. Allowing for this, essentially the exact same, um, square footages and number and setbacks. So if there's any questions on that, I can.
Yeah, on, gee, where am I? Thirty point oh four, uh, D. Non-residential uses in residential districts. Signs not to exceed fifty square feet. I thought that was kind of large.
That's what we currently have. So I just kept what we had. I mean, that's definitely up for discussion. So that would be, you know, maybe like a group home or a church or a community center or something. Those would be like the non-residential uses.
Six by eight.
What's that?
Six by eight is forty-eight, so that would be a, that's a, that's a large sign.
It is, it is, yeah.
Okay. Other proposed changes?
Um, and then section thirty point oh five, these are the signs in non-residential districts. Here again, I'm somewhat reorganizing some of the existing regulations, breaking it down. Building signs, projecting signs, and then keeping the same, you know, additional areas for corner lots and large setbacks. Giving them increased signage based on that. But one aspect, um, and as I just mentioned, we're kind of making a distinction between ground signs and pole signs, both of them being freestanding signs. When this resolution was initially adopted in fourteen, it did allow for, um, like, the pole signs. And it gave additional allowances for sites that were adjacent to I ninety and sites that had frontage on State Route forty-four and Cryle Road. I kept it in the, the text right now because I wasn't sure how to address this, but because a couple of years ago, after the Verizon sign went in, which I have a couple of pictures here. I'm kind of going out of order. If you remember, the Verizon sign was installed, and that is a hundred and twenty square foot pole sign, thirty foot off the ground. And after that was approved, because it met the sign resolution, we heard a lot of negative feedback from trustees, lots of people, right? And so we changed the sign height, that we reduced it severely down to twelve feet. So now any sign can be no taller than twelve feet. We make it have to be on like, basically a monument sign, like a, a ground based sign, which you would not be allowed to have that pole sign anymore. So with lots on, that, with lots that face State Route forty-four and Cryle Road, instead of the, the sixty square foot allowance that every commercial lot is allowed, they're allowed to go up to eighty square feet. Um, but then the sites that are adjacent to I ninety can go up to a hundred and twenty square feet. So I'm questioning whether or not it makes sense to have the sites next to I ninety allowed to go a hundred and twen, hundred and twenty square feet. Because we're essentially not allowing these pole signs anymore, or do we want to make a change and allow those sites that back up, that have visibility on I ninety to have the pole signs? Um, and therefore maybe they want the larger square footage as well. I put like a zoning map in here too, and this is going to take obviously more time than tonight to kind of go through. But the commercial districts, like the, the light purple, that's that RD two district. There's a handful of lots there that have frontage or visibility potentially on I ninety. I know that UH, um, which is the gateway business, they, they bought a parcel of land so they could carve it out, and they put their sign real close to ninety. So when you drive down, and you're headed east on ninety pass there, coming up to the interchange, you can see UH's sign kind of in the woods. So they have one. And then as you keep going down or across to I ninety, you know, the old Quail Hollow Hotel, they had a pole sign there, which, at this point, it's non-conforming. So if they ever want to reuse that, they're going to have to get a variance to reuse that.
So the maximum height even along ninety is twelve feet?
Yes, yeah. So that that might not be what we want. We might need to look at that again. And then there's only, but there's only a couple, really a couple parcels that really have bought this, right? So the ones in the RD two, that, the hospital right across from the Quail Hollow Hotel, old former hotel where the parking lot is. And then, then you get into residential, they're not going to do that. Then you get into some M that, the, the, the blue, uh, the manufacturing district, that's where we have the Urbania. AC companies, the insurance company has a building there. They have a lot behind them that could be developed.
Hand and electric, there's signs on their building, right?
Oh, yes, yes, I'm sorry. Hand and electric, they did a wall sign on the backside, yeah. That's right, because when you're driving down ninety, they did a wall sign, they didn't do a pole sign. That's right, because when you're driving down ninety, they did a wall sign, they didn't do a pole sign. And then, right after you get past Ravenna Road on the right, there's that, um, landmark. The landscape contractor. And then, other than that, everything else is like residential.
Well, when University Hospital put their, um, building out, didn't they have five or six, uh, variances to the sign?
They had many, many variances, as far as I understand, yeah.
Many more.
Lots of variances, because I think they were constructed under, uh, the old sign regulations, not even the one that we're looking at now. So, all of those have variances.
Oh, yeah, and so, so why don't we keep that? I mean, keep what we're proposing. And if they want to put up a pole sign that goes twenty feet in the air, they got to go to VCA. As much as I don't like to do that, unless you want to put a, a twenty-foot pole sign now.
But, but we're talking on I ninety, right?
Right now, we're talking about ninety, yeah.
ODOT governs those signs. ODOT governs the sign, the placement and the height.
Well, they're not in the I ninety right of way. They're on private property that abuts I ninety. Is what-
But even abutting, I think they had their visual, you sure they don't have?
I don't know.
Because I thought that was where UH faced, even though they bought property. They weren't on I ninety, they weren't on, they were on their own property.
Okay.
They were governed by ODOT on this, on the height.
So, I think back in time, Reserva had their sign there also. But now, Reserva don't advertise.
I can try to look into that.
They were pretty strict about height, visual, and any, especially-
There's a law passed-
Site distance.
A number of years ago, the federal law for how close it could be to the freeway. But they get around it down south. You go down Interstate seventy-five through Georgia, they got giant signs way back.
They make their own rules down there.
They do, but.
My concern would be, is twelve feet visually high enough?
It's not.
Along Route ninety?
It's not.
It's not, yeah.
It's not.
Because the trees would block it.
Yeah, the trees are going to block it, so you got to trim a lot.
Yeah.
So, what is the right height? I don't know, but-
Well, I, I, I don't need the twelve feet to be permitted by ODOT. It's in, it's in the sight line. I, I don't, I don't know. I don't know the rules. Remember, they had very strict about the height and the distance from the freeway.
At interchanges or just at any location?
Yeah, they passed a law back years ago. Because it was getting really cluttered, you know, and, uh-
I'm going to look into that. Maybe I can look into that.
That's why certain signs are green, certain signs are brown. Brown identified like a landmark or historic place.
And they put those restaurant signs where the, each restaurant gets a little, as you approach an intersection, the restaurant gets so much space.
Now, those are in the right of way, though.
Yeah, those are in the right of way.
Those are controlled by ODOT, or federal, federal actually.
But I guess, yeah, after starting to look at this more closely, twelve-foot tall sign is not going to be lucrative to do a pole sign, so we're essentially saying you can't do pole signs. And I just want to make sure, is everyone okay with that? Do we understand that? Is that still okay? I mean, that's what we have in here now, essentially. The only thing is, I didn't under, you know, I wasn't sure if it made sense to then give sites adjacent to I ninety more square footage, just to do a bigger sign if they can't really make it something tall that you would even see from I ninety. So, what's the point?
Yeah, what's the point of moving it bigger if you can't see it anyway?
Well, you could if it was big enough.
If it was high enough?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, no, that's not what we're talking, square footing twice.
Even that.
Even that, you, you could-
Big enough and bright enough. Yeah, I mean, supports our businesses, so.
What we're talking about is this Concord, right? Don't forget, we have helicopters that land by the hospital, for example. That need a lot, a lot of clearance.
Hey, we have Taco Bell now. They all come off land. You remember? All their traffic, they said, I mean, bringing up an old issue I did. They, they showed that six, two-thirds of the traffic was coming from I ninety.
Even, even Taco Bell was trying to do a pole sign.
They were.
They, they, they first submitted to me a pole sign, yes. They did.
Really?
They did. Um, and I was just kind of like, your wall signs are taller than your pole sign, like, and we don't allow it based on the design criteria for the base of the sign. But I think with this, we're, we're clearly stating potentially that we do not want pole signs. We're under the current one, it's a little maybe unclear, not as clear.
And I sure hope somebody crashes into the Verizon one.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, I mean, if you're proposing something along I ninety, sorry, but you're not suggesting it also on State Route forty-four, right?
I'm sorry, what?
State Route forty-four. In terms of pole signs.
Well, that, that's an, that's another one where initially they were potentially allowing that, but under the height restrictions now, I don't think we're permitting that at all. Would you guys agree that it would not be appropriate to have pole signs on Cryle Road? I mean, or-
Auburn, I mean, forty-four.
Forty-four, yeah.
Or forty-four? Okay, because I have some other examples of some signs that, like for context, you know, purposes, just to show you. Um, I don't know, Brian, maybe we can put the slides up again real quick. Sorry, trying to, okay. So, as we talked about, the Verizon one is like thirty feet tall. The one, um, to the right of that is just the rendering of one of the Cryle Crossing signs. I know there's like three of them over there, but for size purposes, this is just under eleven feet tall. And it's just over sixty square feet. And, um, they were allowed to do more than one because they have a lot of frontage and it met the criteria, um, where you could put the distance between them and do more than one. Then even the Sheets, which is right at Capital Parkway and State Route forty-four, um, they put this, the, the sign on the top left here, this is the one that's at the corner there. They are just at twelve feet. And it's just over sixty-five square feet. Like sixty-five and a half square feet. So, even under that, they could have potentially gone up to eighty square feet. But they kept it around sixty-five. And then, the, um, Kramer, those are two other examples that came in. The one on the top right corner, that's about forty-five square feet, where they've got the monument base, and then the other one is about twenty-four square feet. Okay, then continuing, um, some other changes that I wanted to point out. In section thirty point zero seven, this was the, is the electronic message center, um, section of the resolution. I'm proposing to kind of reword this, give it a new term and a new definition. Because some of these, they really are like changeable copy, change the message sign. You could do it manually or you can do it by electronic means. So, there still are some places, um, that do the manual change, like here at Town Hall, we have a sign out front that you can change the lettering, right? Or there's a couple, or the church at the corner. Yep.
They have some Red Hawk.
Oh, Red Hawk, yeah, the changeable copy, so this is-
Funny signs.
Yeah, yeah, for Red Hawk, they only change the words on there, yeah. And this just allows, this kind of reflects that, so you can do the changeable copy, whether it's manual or you can do the change, changeable copy by electronic means, and these are the rules for them. One new thing that I was proposing to add was if you're going to do an electronic message center in a residential district for a non-residential use, that, um, I included in some new setback requirements. A hundred feet away from a residential parcel and a minimum a hundred and twenty feet away from a residential structure. Just to try to cut, cut down potentially on any nuisance from any light dislocation or anything like that.
On thirty oh seven, and, uh, A, B, C, whatever it is, top of page twenty-seven. Number four. Transition time between messages and/or message frames shall be instantaneous. Does that mean it doesn't go in line by line by line by line? It's got to be, here's the message.
That's what it said.
Here's the message. Thank, here it is. It can't be a, uh, a PowerPoint thing where you throw one line in and then another line.
The whole message changes.
The whole message.
St. Gabe's has one of those, because it messes flips.
Oh, yeah, it does. Is that what you mean by that one? It's got to be instantaneous.
It just, whatever the message is of a change, it has to be like immediate.
Okay, okay.
No scrolling, no flashing.
Yeah, no-
Yeah.
Distraction.
Yeah, no fancy PowerPoints.
Who has?
St. Gabe's.
No animated, you know, video.
St. Gabe's does.
It's the only one I know.
Oh, I, I-
Auburn Career Center has one.
That's what I, yeah.
They're, yeah, they have, yeah, they're not using it correctly sometimes, yeah.
Auburn has one.
Where it comes in line by line.
We approved it, I remember we approved it.
Yeah, I know, we did, but we didn't have this going either.
Yeah, we still don't.
Oh, and then also adding into that, um, just making, um, it clear that you can't do off-site advertising on those changeable copy signs as well. And then, um, section thirty point zero eight, these are the commercial banners. I'm kind of renaming this to light pole banners because that's essentially what it is. Like those small little flag banner signs that you might see like at, I think Auburn Career Center actually have them. Or at like Lakeland College when you drive around and throughout the campuses, they might be promoting something like uniformly throughout the campus. These are like those small signs that we already have in here that we're essentially potentially allowing, businesses to use in non-residential uses, just renaming that to a light pole banner. And then also making it, um, clear that you can't do, uh, electronic message center or changeable copy on these light pole banners. And, um, that you, you could, you could leave them up year-round. So, it wouldn't be subject to the forty-five days, like the temporary banner. And that you're not permitted to put any other signs on those poles that you've been approved of putting on.
So, would that be like the better signs that you see?
Right. Right.
Yeah, I mean, some communities do them that way, but are those? Are those in the right of way, I believe?
Yeah, they're on the poles.
Yeah. So, those, yeah, those would maybe fall under a different kind of category, because we don't allow signs in the right of way, but I think the governmental entity puts them up in the right of way, then then it's probably okay.
Those signs are put up by the, by the city, I think.
Yeah, yeah, usually it's the city or the township that puts those up. And then, thirty, thirty-ten, this is our signs exempt from regulations. Just a little bit of cleanup there. Uh, one, one potential change would be to exempt flags of the, um, US, the state or the township. Foreign nations, uh, that have, now, this is diplomatic relations with the US. That the, the, basically, these flags, um, they must be flown in accordance with established protocols. But they're also exempt from regulations. But a flag that doesn't meet these conditions would be considered a sign and would be subject to the sign regulations.
So, do you happen to know what the protocols are?
Good question, yeah. Brady, Brady and I kind of talked about this a little bit.
Right, doesn't the US flag have to be lit?
Lit?
Dark, yeah.
And I don't know, there are certain-
I mean, I have it in my mailbox post.
Is it lit?
No.
It's supposed to be. Mine's not either, but I did have a light there.
Or can we take it down?
Take it down at night.
Oh, oh, oh.
Get a little LED light.
Just get a solar thing.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Solar.
It needs to be lit.
It's part of respect for the, the flag.
So, uh, that's it? I mean, it can, it can be displayed vertically, or is it any?
Yeah, anywhere, as long as in the evening, it's lit for, for the evening.
Okay, thank you.
If it's displayed vertically, the stars have to be in a certain orientation, but I don't know what it is. I don't know if it's stars in upper right or upper left. But one of them.
One of them.
One of those two.
One is left. Okay. Cool.
And then, um, just a couple of small changes to section thirty-eleven, the prohibited signs. One of the additions would be to prohibit flag signs.
So, that brings up the next question. I, I, I went to the definition of flag and flag sign. Trying to draw the distinction, so if I have a, a post, freestanding, temporary portable, portable freestanding sign that is mounted in a manner that allows the sign to flutter, that's prohibited. So, why is that? If, if a flag is I don't, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't understand the difference here.
Oh.
Flag sign flutter.
Flag sign would essentially prohibit like those blade or feather-like signs that a lot, some businesses use for temporary signage. I have a photo of one.
It's of the United States?
No, no, it would not be, it, no, it would not be the flag, yeah. Those flags of the U, yeah, those flags are exempt from regulations.
I'm, I'm, I thought I was referencing United, the US flag, flag sign, so it's a flag, it's just a flag. Or a banner.
Or a banner.
Well, we have the new proposed definition of flag sign.
Yes, I was reading that because now I'll go back to see the definition of banner sign. So, a banner, it's cloth or canvas too. I guess I don't see a lot of difference between banner and flag.
I think the flag, the flag sign is more like waves and like draws attention to it, can be maybe potentially more distracting, where the banner sign is more like sturdy and like erected if it's on the ground more, it's not going to be moving when it's installed.
Okay, but it could be cloth, canvas.
Well, a lot of times you see the flags, you know, as a matter of fact, people's porches that are strung this way, it's, it's a form of a flag, and it's stretched across as the flag railing.
Okay.
That's what they'd be talking about. Now, is that, yeah. Is that a sign? When they, when the, the orientation of, I, I'm not even sure if it's a complete flag, but it's got the red, white, and blue in that semi circle.
I would call that a holiday decoration, probably.
That's what I would call it.
And that would be exempt.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, is that the most common?
Yeah.
We do have the exemptions for holiday lights and decorations when they're displayed during, you know, yeah, yeah, so I think some of that would fall to that.
There's a military post that's in Gainesville. If you went there, they give you how to display the flag. They give you all the ways of doing the flags, whether on post or on, you know, hanging vertically. They have signs and they have regulations for how you're supposed to display the United States flag.
Okay. One more question, then, on page thirty point six.
Oh, you're going way back.
Yeah, yeah. I waited till last to pop this one. But I already brought the political sign that was eliminated, but above it, I'm a little, uh, just concerned how a permanent sign is defined. It's like a negative of the other, it doesn't, we're not defining, we're just saying it doesn't satisfy the definition of a temporary, so all the rest are per-
It's the opposite.
It's the opposite. I, I don't know if the, the the lawyer in me says that's not really a good, a good way to define a permanent sign.
A permanent sign is a sign that's fixed.
Technically, nothing's permanent.
Once it's installed, it's fixed.
I think there would be a definition of a permanent sign.
It's permanent till somebody takes it away.
Till somebody takes it down.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what, I missed what?
I stomped the attorney.
We should look at it?
We should look at it.
Yeah. I know, and I think part of that is like we, we have a pretty good definition of what the temporary sign is, right?
Yeah.
And then if it doesn't meet that criteria of a temporary sign, then we, then we're kind of like, well, then it's a permanent sign. And we're regulated as a permanent sign. So what is the permanent sign? It's not a temporary sign, but is there a better way to define it? Probably.
That's right.
Yeah. Okay.
I just found it odd to define it. Thank you.
I mean, we could potentially just leave what we have now, any sign designed or designated for use for indefinite period of time. I don't see why we would have to say it could be permanent, you know what I mean?
Mm-hmm.
I'm not sure. I'll just keep going if you guys.
Well, that's basically the end of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good breakpoint.
Yeah, yeah, just some small other updates to the design and illumination criteria. I was just kind of moving from in 3012, those items A1 and 2, those were carryover from another section. Just brought those back over here, kind of updating the illumination criteria. And then one, one thing I was proposing under the administrative procedures as far as how we handle sign permits. Right now, for temporary sign permits for non-residential uses, we require them to submit an application. They submit a $25 deposit. And if they remove the sign as they were, as per the zoning resolution, we will rebate back them. We'll give them that deposit back, the $25. I was suggesting that we don't make it a deposit anymore, that we just charge them a $25 permit to help cover the administrative expenses of doing all of that. Because in order to...
Pretty minor.
Yeah. So you'll see that proposed change on the Appendix 1, the zoning fee schedule as well, and some other small updates to reflect the solar energy system stuff and the EV charging that we just adopted as well.
Heather, the one suggestion I have. Where we have pictures, are we going to put these pictures in the regulation?
Which ones?
Oh, any picture that we have.
Some of the ones that are in there, I mean, do you have specific ones that you want to?
Well, no, in general.
Okay.
In total.
Yeah.
I'd like to see the reference. I'm looking at page 30 dash, or 30.12. And the red there encased an irregular wall surface, a straight line, extended along the wall, a surface shall be used to measure the length. And that's for primary building frontage.
Mm-hmm.
And I'd like to see in there, see figure 30.03.F.1. And then put that figure underneath the picture.
Oh, okay, yeah, identify the figures, yeah.
And that goes throughout the whole.
For any of them that we're going to have in there?
We've got, we've got a lot of pictures.
Yeah. And some of them I was proposing, and I don't, to maybe eliminate. I didn't think they were all that helpful, but we can...
I thought they were.
Some, oh, all of them?
Even, even the ones, even these, these were very helpful.
Oh, oh, okay.
The ones you had in your PowerPoint.
Yeah, yeah.
Both packets, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, they always say a picture is worth a thousand words.
Okay, okay. All right, yeah, I can, I can, if you guys all want that, we can make sure that there's very specific references to the, to the figures.
I think it's a good idea. Because a lot of times when you're reading your regulations, especially, there could be some confusion, you know?
Yeah.
But when you look to a picture right away, just make a drawing. Oh, it's obvious, okay. No further.
Right.
Answers all my questions, you know? And then scratch your head, did they mean this? And then you might start confusing things with the other verbiage that's in there. It helps.
This might be nitpicking.
It's okay.
But it might not.
I put a circle or curve yesterday. Uh, page 30.14. 30, so it starts, that's where 30.04 starts. Couple pages later, 30.05 starts. So the title of this section is residential signs. Having, there's no such thing as a residential sign. Signs, right, that are in a residential district.
Oh, it says signs in residential districts.
This says residential signs, and then 30.05 is signs in residential districts. I don't know, I was a little...
Well, the description is much more understandable than the one that you mentioned.
30.04 is a permanent signs for all residential and non-residential in residential districts. 30.05, permanent signs in non-residential. So...
Yeah, that's not right.
It's not right, right?
The distinction is confusing. Change the titles on 04 and 05.
That's what I'm thinking, right?
Yeah.
This is where like I think, which is all the red, kind of like, wait, I went, looked at it. Then I went to 30.05, then I said, oh, okay, and then I went, wait a minute, 30.4, 30.05, non-residential. Are they duplicative of the, on the non-residential section?
Oh, I was just looking at, no, I agree, maybe it should, I'm not sure why we took out permanent, shouldn't it say permanent signs in residential districts and then permanent signs in non-residential districts?
But in 30.04, but then the next sentence says, and for non-residential, the sentence, I don't... And then it went to multifamily, and then D, 30.04D is non-residential uses in residential districts.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
But 30.05 is non-residential districts.
They have to come up with verbiage that pertains the same for all of them.
You're not confused, but I...
Not, well, I mean, so for in 30.04D, these are the non-residential uses in residential districts.
So how can you have a non-residential use of a sign in a residential, I'm confused by that. What does that mean?
No, the sign is not residential.
Sounds like a political sign.
Like, the use of the lot is being for a non-residential purpose. Non-residential uses. So a church located in an R1 would be considered a non-residential use. What kind of signage are they allowed to have?
Oh.
But I agree that we do need to fix that.
There are non-residents in...
Got it.
Yeah.
I didn't even think of it. Church.
Yeah, once you dig into it deeper, now you realize why it's worded that way. Because we have, like you mentioned, the church is in a residential district.
Yeah.
Or you'll be belly going home.
Yeah, okay.
Remember all this stuff from 2014?
Yeah. That's right. Yeah.
Maybe, maybe we didn't need to change the heading of it at all. Maybe I should have just said, yeah. Because initially, originally said permanent signs in residential districts. We could have just probably left it that way.
Yeah, I think so, because then...
Yeah. And then it could have said permanent signs in...
In non-residential.
Non-residential districts, yeah. Yeah.
But you answered, you cleared, cleared that up for me, thank you.
Okay, but, good point, Don, I think we should fix that.
Okay, thank you.
And Brady, I was going to ask you, like, because there's so many red changes on here, is there a way that we could almost do like this as though we're just replacing this entire section and then somehow present it to the commission? And this is the new text, instead of going through this, okay, what are we taking out, what are we putting in?
Yes, we could do kind of like a restated, I guess, section 30, but we would still need to show the changes. You know what I mean, like white underline or something like that. So in other words, even though we're taking this section and even doing, you know, let's say that one of these sections is not being at all changed, which I don't know if that's even possible. But in any event, we would definitely have to show the underlines still. So even though you're going to do the whole third, like let's say you're going to do all section 30 and replace it with a new section 30, we should show exactly what's being changed. It doesn't have to be red, but underlined somehow.
So it still have to look like this?
It doesn't have to look like that, but I think we have to do something to show.
Might as well keep it that way.
Yeah, I'm not going to make another document to do that, though, yeah. Although, could it, would it be, well, maybe we could talk after the meeting, but would it be acceptable to like give the board a clean copy with the changes accepted as a side to it?
Absolutely.
So they can at least see, okay.
Yeah, if this section didn't exist, then I would say, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So what, what was that conversation? How are we going to go forward with this? Make a complete copy of what all the changes are going to be and place it in one document?
So for the, for the next work session that we have, we can still have like the red changes like this. And then I can do a save as and accept all the changes. And so that way you could read, okay, so assuming that we accepted all these changes, how would I actually be reading this document? Like, what would it? But for the text amendment itself, this would still be what we would be showing the public. Well, what the changes are.
Change from, change to.
Yeah.
Something like that.
Yeah.
Well, if you have any specific changes or comments you'd like to have, if anybody has any specific comments you'd like Heather to comment on or consider, I suggest you give them to her directly.
I mentioned everything tonight, that was for me, thank you.
Well, I've got a bunch of chicken.
Why am I not surprised?
Yeah. Well, he likes changing all the grammar.
Yeah.
Well...
Punctuation.
His punctuation is grammar. No, no. There's a few of those.
That's fine.
There's a few of those, but that's all right. My wife, my wife is very ticklish on that. When she sees something going on, the screens or whatever on TV and the, that's incorrect. The verbiage is gone. The punctuation, she's...
I can introduce her to hire them.
Don't these radio, TV stations have people like, check that out, that's terrible. Be sure of that. She gets all the swell and they, there is a whole bunch of terrible crap going on. Okay. All right.
Whole bunch of terrible.
Any other discussion on the sign regulation tonight? Anybody up here? Okay. Okay, we're done with the first of a few. So if you have any specific comments or concerns about the sign regulation, thank you, Heather, this is...
Lot of work.
Lot of work.
An awesome amount of work. It is. Both the PowerPoint and what we have in red. So thank you very much for doing that, thank you.
You're welcome.
Both of you, you guys work together, thank you. So, all business, we have the item tabled on the Concord Township Zoning Commission 1 and 9 group. That goes until, well, less than a year. July 2026.
Let's just change the zoning.
So, next meeting, October 7th. The 10th month of the year already. Where does time fly? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A second. All those in favor? Aye, aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Not till you hit that hammer.
I forgot.
Mine would be.
Yeah.